Look in there, folks. Alright, uh, I want to call the, uh, everybody hear me okay?
No.
Everybody...
Yep.
No? Who's saying no? Reasoning cannot hear me?
Oh my god.
Can you hear me now?
Yes!
I don't know if I'm gonna talk like that all night. Alright, so you better bring me some water. I gotta call the meeting to order. Uh, I wanna have, uh, Constable Lopierre come up and lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance, so if you would please stand while we recite the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the values of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands on a nation, on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, how's this? This is better. Alright. I am satisfied that Constable has returned the warrant. Uh, so what I'd like to do at this point is, um, have a, uh, i-is there any objection, uh, to allowing, uh, Town Council, uh, Nicole right up here, uh, to speak as well as, uh, perhaps, uh, Town, uh, Accountant? Is there any objection to allowing them to speak? Oh, and Administrative Assistant? Is there any objection to allow Town Administra... My, uh, my deepest apologies. Town Administrator? Is there any objection to allowing these three people to speak? They are not, uh, citizens of the town, and so therefore, they need permission in order to speak. Any objection? Hearing none, you're allowed to speak. Um, if there's anybody who is not a citizen of Brookfield, Massachusetts, you should be sitting over there. Uh, I'm assuming that everybody is a citizen of Brookfield, uh, that's sitting in the middle here. Registered voter. Thank you, Town Clerk. Alright, so, I just wanna read some rules, um, for this evening. Um, I do this all the time, and I just wanna make sure that, um, everybody understands. Most people here, uh, understand how this works, but I wanna make sure that everybody does. A speaker making the initial motion on an article will be given five minutes to explain, uh, or support, explain support for the article. Further comments, supporting or opposing, will be limited to no more than two minutes. Time limits are over all, so if you ask somebody a question, uh, the answer comes out of your time, not theirs. Uh, no one will be recognized a second time on any motion until everyone, until everyone else wishing to speak has had an opportunity to speak. I will also do my best to alternate between those that are supporting an, uh, a motion and those that are, uh, opposing, uh, a motion, and I'd like to just carry it on that way, so if you're in line at that microphone, uh, and I ask for supporting and you're not supporting, uh, you leave way to the next person in line who's, who supports it. Okay? Everybody understand that? Any questions on that? Good. Uh, rude or disrespectful speech will not be tolerated, and we do have constables. Constable Lopierre, uh, he's, uh, what did you say, eighty, what? Constable Grubbs is also here, uh, but Constable Lopierre, uh, I, he said, I hate to, I hate to, do you mind if I say how old you are?
Eighty-three years old.
Eighty-three years old. He challenged me to fight him, and I said, "Not on your life." Okay? So rude and disrespectful behavior, the constables will take care of that, so please, just be nice. Uh, all debater questions are directed at me, uh, not to the audience. You're talking to me. Um, let's see. The previous question, uh, once, uh, the previous question, and if you don't know what that means, it's a motion to close debate. Once that motion is made, uh, we will proceed to vote on that motion, and if it is successful, debate will then be closed. If we have a line of people standing there and that motion is made, I'm sorry, you're out of luck. Uh, microphones, again, alternating, supporting and opposing. Uh, we are here to make decisions about, uh, the town of Brookfield. Decisions are made by making motions, debating and voting. We only have two articles, so this is pretty simple, I think. I'm overemphasizing this, but no one, uh, should speak unless they are engaged in one of these two things. You should look to address the town meeting either in support or opposition to a motion. You can certainly ask questions during debate, but please keep questions and debate focused on the motion at hand. If anyone, uh, has stolen your thunder and made the point that you wanted to make, please refrain from repeating the same point. Um, if you think I'm doing something wrong, uh, please stand up. I don't care if you're interrupting me or anybody else. Please stand up and let me know that you think I'm doing something wrong, and then we'll go from there. Uh, finally, uh, let's see. Uh, yeah, we don't have to worry about that. Okay. So, everybody, any questions on anything I just read?
Mr. Moderator, Don Taft.
Yeah.
You're gonna, uh, provide five minutes for the petitioner make a presentation, correct?
Five minutes.
Okay. Would you also allow the five minutes for the Planning Board Chairman to respond?
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be an appropriate thing. And I may change these rules to take care of that as well. Um, so, what I'd like to do, like I said, there's, uh, two articles on the warrant this evening. One, uh, is gonna probably take us, uh, a little while, uh, and the other one is probably gonna be taken care of in a very short period of time, and that's Article Number Two. Uh, and so, um, I'm just wondering if by unanimous consent, uh, we can take up, by unanimous consent, I mean, does anybody object to doing this? If you do, then we'll go through a process, but it's just a lot cleaner and quicker to do it this way. Uh, does anybody object, uh, to taking up Article Number Two before we take up Article Number One? Hearing none? Uh, I will take a motion on Article Number Two.
Mr. Moderator.
Uh, I'll give you the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars from free cash to tax title expenses.
Is there a second? Alright, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. You gotta walk a little quicker.
I absolutely do have a question here. Thirty thousand dollars, when are we gonna stop paying KP money to check our real estate tax titles? When is this gonna stop?
Be careful.
Be careful of what?
We don't use KP for tax title. That's the first point. The second point is that we've generated over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax title takings, and in order to continue that and not raise this on the tax rate, we would like to transfer the free cash so it doesn't raise the taxes.
What's the thirty thousand gonna be used for right now?
It's paying for cleaning up titles in land court.
On how many properties?
Do we have a number? One moment, please.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome. Roughly thirty.
When are we gonna start, um, disposing of these properties?
We're working on trying to find an auctioneer who will take the properties to auction.
Do you have any that are all set to go?
We do.
Okay, so you're trying to move those now?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and this thirty thousand's coming out of free cash?
Yes, it is.
Alright, what's that leave us with, free cash?
Six hundred and ten thousand dollars in free cash.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All of us opposed say no? The ayes have it? We just, uh, appropriated, uh, thirty thousand dollars for tax title expenses. Uh, alright, now, um, we're going to Article Number One, uh, which is to, uh, a citizen's petition, so, uh, is there someone here, uh, that wishes to make a, uh, motion with regard to the citizen's petition? Is there anyone here that's, is gonna make a motion on Article Number One? Would you please come to the microphone? Just walk right up here. This way.
Hey, Steve Lamro?
Yeah.
Um, just making a motion, or? I don't know what I was really supposed to do.
I make a motion that we hear the Article Number One.
Yeah, that's...
Uh, if, no, I'm sorry. If, if you'd like to come up and make the motion, I'd be more than happy to hear you come up and make the motion.
Yeah, I thought I kinda had to make a motion to hear it. I, I mean, I didn't know I had to come up to...
Somebody has to make a motion, otherwise we're going home. So, somebody better make a motion here.
I, I mean, can I, can I move to hear the...
My name is Christopher Keller of Thirty-Six Lake Road. I hereby make a motion that we hear the Article Number One on the warrant.
So, uh, hold on a second. So, alright, so you're moving to amend the town bylaws according to what was printed in the warrant, is that correct?
I make a motion that we hear the, uh, the Article Number One as is on the warrant.
I'll take that as a motion to amend the town bylaws according to what was printed. I'm giving it to you with a silver platter, for heaven's sake. I'm taking that as a motion, uh, to take up, uh, the citizen's petition.
Okay.
Are you, are you a vote, registered voter of town? Okay.
I, David Fromm, move to vote to approve the zoning bylaw as printed in the handout, replacing the text of warrant article.
Is there a second? Alright, is a second. A motion has been made, uh, to approve, uh, the, uh, amendment to the town zoning bylaws as it, as it wa, as it was printed in the warrant? As it was printed in the handout? Okay. Alright, so the first question I wanna ask everybody is, there was a handout in the back of the room. Okay? Does everybody get one of those handouts? It says, "Amended warrant article, proposed amendments of the Brookfield Cannabis Zoning Bylaw." Everybody get a copy of that? 'Cause if you don't have a copy of that, you should go get one, because that's what we're actually gonna be talking about tonight, not what was in, uh, you know, what you might have seen, that grayish sort of, um, sheet that came out earlier. Is everybody clear on that? Just wanna make sure everybody has the correct piece of paper, 'cause that's what we're going off of. There's some milling about, so I'm gonna allow people an opportunity to...
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so the attachment says pages one through four. However, there's only three. Could somebody clarify that?
Uh, about, about, about...
The fourth page was...
Can anybody hear me?
The fourth page was the beginning of the signed petition by the registered voters who signed it.
Alright. Motion has been made and seconded to amend the, uh, to amend the zoning bylaws, the proposed, or amend the, uh, Brookfield Cannabis Zoning Bylaw. So, maker of the motion has five minutes to speak through his motion. Test, test, test. Ready?
Good evening. In 2019, the town meeting voted to adopt our marijuana bylaw by a vote of seventy-three to four. The old medical marijuana overlay map was left in place, but the Planning Board has promised time and again to expand this tiny map, which includes only two percent of our population. If you are not one of the chosen few on the tiny red dots on Route Nine, you don't even have the right to ask permission to try to participate. Tonight, the Board will speak against this bylaw. They will say it is rushed, but it's been three and a half years, and they have not fixed this. They have called on citizens to come forward, but in July, when the chairperson asked me to write a memo to begin the process, I did the next day. Four months later, it has still not made the agenda. At the same meeting, she said it would take at least two years to fix, but five years is just too long to, to open up the opportunity we voted for. That is why we are here. The Board has, the Board has stated that she doesn't like the citizen petition, and that is understandable, because what government body happily cedes its control to the citizens? But now, the citizens have come forward to work on this problem. Maybe not in the way the Planning Board would like, but we are here to solve what even they agree is a problem. A bylaw which excludes ninety-eight percent of us from any chance to participate, while towns around us create jobs and increase revenue other than from residential property tax. We citizens of this rural town are perfectly poised to benefit from cannabis if we will only finally grant ourselves the opportunities we voted for in 2019. We citizens here tonight make up, make up. We will choose to vote against this bylaw tonight and continue the virtual ban, denying ourselves the very rights we voted for in 2019. That is a fair outcome, if we think so little of our own liberty. Or we can decide to act boldly and support this fair and more accessible bylaw. Opponents will point to changes in the bylaw presented tonight, and of course, there are changes. The most notable is that we open up the growing of this plant to the landowners and farmers who grow plants, and that they can process the plants and make products from them appropriately on the land, just as a dairy produces cream and milk, and then makes butter and cheese, or an orchard presses cider or a brewery bottles beer. All of these are things that are appropriate in the rural area, and the only difference here is the stigma that still attaches to marijuana. Aside from that prejudice, the situations are largely the same. This is an industry based on a plant, and we are a community of growers. We can grow it here and sell it statewide, and build businesses employing potentially hundreds of our citizens, as they do in North Brookfield and Sturbridge, and Southbridge. And we wrote this bylaw to keep most of the power with the Planning Board. Manufacturing outside the rural district, growing indoors, retail and medical, all remain in the lengthy and arduous special permit process. Because this is a conservative bylaw. Some other towns have no special permit requirements at all, but we do say no to lengthy special permits for the farmer who wants to grow an acre or two in her field, and the cultivator in a greenhouse, because it is not fair to put them through a process meant for large projects. And this, here tonight, is not just about cannabis, it is absolutely about our freedoms. The question is, are we about freedom? Our liberty is the topic. Do we remove the absurd overlay map and open up the law to the rest of us? Whatever we do, it is an exercise in almost pure democracy. The people assembled here will decide if more of us should have the right to try, to simply be eligible as citizens of this town to approach the Select Board and ask permission to go to the state and ask permission. Because ninety-eight percent of us here in this town don't have a house in the lucky zone, we do not have the right to even ask permission to try. To vote against these changes, you have to be comfortable with that restriction on your rights as a citizen and taxpayer. The opponents have the right to those opinions. I'm just hopeful that those opinions do not deprive the rest of us of the chance to ask permission to participate in this lawful opportunity if we want to. Not when ninety-four percent of this town meeting in 2019 already voted that we should have that liberty. Much more important than any particular product or plant is our freedom to make the choices we deem good for ourselves. That is what rights are for. That is what liberty means, and tonight, I urge my fellow citizens to vote for that freedom despite all resistance, and add back the liberty which has been too long withheld. Thank you.
No applauding, booing, cheering, or otherwise. Alright? Constables will help you out of the room if you continue that. Am I clear? Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Good. Alright. Uh, I do believe by law we are supposed to hear from, uh, the Planning Board, uh, and so, remember on the Planning Board, I believe, is going forward to, to, uh, speaking. Everybody still hear me okay back there? Hear my bellwether? Actually, the ladies in the back there are my bellwether, so you give me a thumbs up if, uh, or a thumbs down. Go. Five minutes.
Mr. Moderator. That's a secret. It's, you're getting handling noise, but...
Okay, give me that one back. Alright, folks. We have, we're supposed to have the microphone set up here for us when we got here, if we're not. So, my deepest apologies. This will never happen again, because I will intervene.
Can everyone hear me? Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I'm Sharon Mahoney, Chair of the Planning Board, have been for fifteen years. Um, Mr. Fromm came to us last June, actually, prior to last June, and he emailed me and asked if he could grow, process and sell on his property. And I told him that the bylaws would not, as, as they were written, were not allowed to. So he then, um, went to the Town Administrator and worked with her, and she instructed him on how to do a citizens initiative. Um, at the time, if I can backpedal a bit, at the time we instituted the original bylaw, there were some growers who were upset that the marijuana overlay district would not allow them to grow, and I spoke with them, one of them may even be here, and said, "If you wanna come and work at the Planning Board, we'll work on an amendment together that we can jointly present to the town. That would meet your expectations and your wishes, and that would still protect the town." Because the job of the Planning Board is to balance the public good with private interests. That's our job. So, uh, one of the growers came to one of our meetings. I offered to give him the state, um, rules about what was involved in putting a cannabis business together. And I also approached the Agricultural Commission and asked them if they'd be interested in modifying our brand-new bylaw, and I was told by the Secretary of the Agricultural Commission that no, none of the members were interested. Uh, Mr. Fromm later came to us and, uh, he, uh, he put forth his citizens initiative instead of working with the Planning Board, which is his right, but it was defeated, and it was defeated soundly. I then up, went up to him and his attorney, I believe, after that meeting, and offered to work with him. And the memo that he talks about, sent in July, I sent along to the Planning Board, and it was discussed. So that is, uh, that is not correct. We have been discussing changing the bylaw all along, because the overlay district now needs to be either eliminated or revised, because we now have a school smack in the middle of it. So that process was ongoing. As for the amendment that has been presented tonight, we have not seen it. Mr. Fromm and his lawyer attended the public hearing on the original warrant article, and he wanted to, he wanted, through his lawyer, to, for us to discuss the new amendment, when in fact, that was not the legal point of the meeting. And we were reluctant to have a ni, a twel, eleventh hour change that we would work on that night. So instead, we prepared a report for the warrant article. And some of you have it, I apologize that there's not enough copies, but what it does is it addresses the original warrant article, most of which appears to be on this amendment, with the exception of the greenhouse, uh, provision, and it lays out what we feel the changes would do to the life and the appearance of the town. The bottom line is, we oppose the original warrant article. We were not allowed to take a vote on the amendment, we're going to do that tonight, as is our right, but we were not allowed, we did not review it as a board. It's the first time we've seen it, so we're gonna vote individually on it as citizens, but as far as the original warrant article goes, which I feel, after the time I've had to look at it, the few minutes, seems to be substantially like the warrant article that was printed and distributed for the meeting. The bottom line is, we feel that the changes to Brookfield Zoning Bylaw proposed are too far-reaching in their removal or reduction of the protections and safeguards found in the current bylaw for the citizen of the town. The Board also finds that the proposed text is unclear or inconsistent in places, making it less reliable as a guide to what it allows or doesn't allow. And for this reason, the Planning Board does not recommend approval of this article by town meeting. I wanna stress, the Board is not against marijuana businesses. We want to make sure the town's interests, the citizens' interests, the butters' interests, most importantly, are protected, especially with regard to the rural residential area. People might be worried that a manufacturing facility, which is not allowed in a rural residential area at all under the current bylaw for any purpose, might spring up next to their house lot.
You got ten seconds.
Um, I'm just gonna wrap up, and, um, we will, we will go along with the will of the town, but we are going to keep working on a bylaw that the Planning Board will support, and we welcome Mr. Fromm's involvement, again, if he is willing to work with us.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alright, is there, uh, okay, so now, we're into two-minute speeches. Uh, is there someone that is in support, uh, of the amendment? In support?
I, I just have some information based on what has come out.
Uh, uh, are you gonna speak in support, or you have a question? Is that what it is?
I'm gonna speak as the town assessor. I just wanna clarify the number of parcels that are affected by this.
Okay.
There are about sixteen hundred in parcel, parcels...
Can anybody hear him okay?
There are about sixteen hundred parcels in town, between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and thirty-five of those parcels are privately held, ten-plus acre parcels.
Okay. Thank you. Alright. Anybody that wants to speak in support of the motion to amend the bylaws, come on up to the microphone. If you wanna speak and line up and things like that, feel free.
Good evening. This is, uh, Charles Galant, Seventeen Main Street. Support really is kind of an obvious thing. For that vote, it was overwhelming, I was there for that. So it's one of those things where it's like, why do I need you the permission to grow on my property if I need to? So, that's kinda where it's frustrating, and I also found that the comments from the Planning Board, "Oh, let's work together," no, I'm sorry.
Um, careful, careful. You need to be very careful about your comments about...
I'm not attacking nobody. I found the comment to be a bit aggressive, that they're heavy-handed.
Okay, and I want you to understand that I'm Town Moderator, and if you start defaming and...
Yes, sir. I understand, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I understand, I'm not attacking nobody, I pre, I apologize. But it needs to pass. This is, this amendment, it's gonna be good for the community, it's good for people, and it potentially brings more jobs here than, you know, just driving through Walmart, big corporation. We, none of us want that. We want local businesses thriving. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, anybody wanna speak in opposition? In opposition to the motion?
Mr. Moderator. I think that, uh, I'm, I'm not opposed to, uh, amending the marijuana bylaw, the overlay. However, I think that you need cooperation between the petitioner and the Planning Board to meld their, uh, thoughts and get them right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
Maureen Leepack, One Twenty-One Race Corner.
You, you're right up to that microphone.
One Twenty-One Race Corner. Um, I just wanted to comment mostly, um, the petitioner, you know, goes on about liberty and freedom, and this is not, uh, simply an expansion of the overlay district, it attempts to circumvent the special permit process, which is not intended to give government more power, but residents and outlets have a say in what happens to the development of their town. So as written, this amendment just takes away your voice, and it too is something only a few can benefit from, as we just heard, and it creates an unfair balance by giving a select industry special privilege that other businesses don't have. The brewery had to go through this permitting process, and I think a special permit should be required for, uh, commercial enterprise. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody wanna speak in support of the motion? Anybody wanna speak in opposition to the motion? Yeah, I, I, I kind of assumed that, and so, we're good, man.
My name is Christopher Keller.
So, Christopher, could you do me a favor?
You can hear me now.
Not too close, not too close.
That was that.
That's perfect.
All right. So I'm obviously in support of this because we already voted for this, and when we voted for it, it was mentioned that the overlay map was going to be a placeholder, that it was going to be changed, and it never got changed. And I know it's not the intention, but it still has the end effect, and to layman's terms, it's a bait-and-switch, and I'm not saying it was on purpose, but it has, that's the end effect of it, you know, and it's frustrating because you tried to work with the board, and the planning board, I was at that special meeting last night.
So we could speak specifically to the amendment and not talk about any complaints about the planning board?
I'm not making any complaints.
Okay.
I'm not making any complaints, so just let me finish my thought, I appreciate it. So what I was saying was, is I was at the special hearing last night, okay, and the planning board said that the amendment is a great foundation, it's a good foundation, because I asked them point-blank, is there anything in this amendment, was there anything in the petition, citizens' petition, that was good, that was positive? And they said it was a great foundation. Great, we have a great foundation, that's what we do, build houses, let's build off that great foundation and move forward. Okay, we have a great foundation, but we can't move forward. This map, that gives only the selected few the opportunity to even ask permission, I don't know any other process you could do that, to get a pool, to get anything, you can only live in this zone to even ask permission, to ask. And to sit there and say that, oh, once this goes past, if this gets passed, everybody's going to be growing it, my neighbor's going to be growing it, he's going to be growing it, you still have to go through the process, which includes the state, okay? And that's not easy. We just want to get to the point where we can even ask permission, man, please ask permission. That's what we're asking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody like to speak in opposition?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, I have a question for the planning board, and I was at the public, I'm sorry, am I not, can you hear me now?
They want you to identify.
Oh, I apologize, Tom Regan, 6 Mockingbird Lane. And I was at the meeting last night, so I would ask the planning board, the word "foundation" was used last night, and I would say that, would you consider it a foundation, a solid document from which we can start unmodified, or would you more consider it a starting point from which more discussion and more changes would go there? Because my thought is that the discussion that I heard last night was that the planning board did not think the document was good for the town, but might be a good starting point to come up with something that's good for the town. So I would like your characterization of what the other gentleman just cited from our discussion last night.
I'm not going to speak to what the other gentleman said, but I am going to answer your question, and the answer is yes. We are trying to come up with a bylaw that has the maximum amount of input, and I'm not just talking signatures on a petition, I'm talking about active participation by as many people as possible, including other town officials, for whose advice we would seek. As far as the document being a starting point, yes, Mr. Fromm is entitled, as is any citizen, to put forth ideas about what he feels would be fair and beneficial to the town, and that is what I meant by a foundation. I'm not talking about a citizens' petition that would pass and then modify it, I'm talking about building from a set of ideas that he had and a set of wishes.
You've got 10 seconds.
And then balance it with opinions from the rest of the town.
Thank you. Someone in support?
Mr. Moderator, Ryan Servant, 125 Lake Road. I just want to make a point that the planning board, as mentioned, had three years to do something about that overlay map and hasn't done that yet. And so the fact that this would only affect about 130 parcels, I think, 135, thank you, parcels.
Is that correct, 135?
In that ballpark.
That ballpark.
The fact that it's 10 acres and 200 feet means it's not going to be in the rural district, there's only certain numbers of lots that can actually be affected by this, and I just want to make sure that it's not going to be cropping up at every single one of your neighbors' houses. How many of you guys have 10 acres and 200 feet to be able to grow? Thank you.
Anyone want to speak in opposition? Hang on one second, anybody want to speak in support? Okay, you can speak a second time, this is your last time.
Thank you, I have several additional questions to the planning board. First of all, does the 10-acre requirement apply to manufacturing facilities, or does that only apply to cultivation operations? Second of all, would you, between the time that the town approved the bylaw, including the town approving the overlay map back in July, excuse me, June of 19, and the month after, so we'll say July of 19, through my understanding of when Mr. Fromm approached the board in February of '22, so in that intervening time, did the board receive any indication of interest from town residents to make changes to the bylaw?
I'll answer the second part of the question, and the answer to that is no, even though, as I said, I conducted outreach to people and committees that I thought would be most interested in this. And again, either I got no response, except for two people, one of whom is Mr. Lamro, another was my neighbor, Wally Connor, I did not hear from them again after that, and the other is the members of the agricultural commission. The board doesn't just spend time on this, we spend time on other permits as well, we have other business to conduct, and we've had some very large and contentious projects that we've spent months on. So our time is limited, we have one day a month, if we need extra meetings, we hold them, in fact, for the original bylaw, we had 18 meetings by the planning board. It was a deliberate process, deliberately conservative, and at the time, I said it would be conservative so that we could build on it if we get feedback. Mr. Fromm did not approach us until 2022. It is not the planning board's fault that no one came forward.
Let's be careful. Thank you.
It is not the planning board's fault...
You've got 10 seconds.
...that nobody came forward, and it is not the planning board's fault to drum up support for something, when obviously, after conducting outreach, nobody comes forward.
Okay, thank you. And somebody wish to speak in opposition? Oh, I'm sorry, it's too bad, time's up. Opposition, support, go ahead.
I did just want to mention that, we did approach the planning board at one point.
Okay, so I want to stop this back and forth between the planning board and the proponents of this.
I was just correcting that.
No, I just, I want to stop the back and forth between the planning board and the proponents of this motion, okay? You know, what's passed is passed, we're here to make a decision on this bylaw, not to get into a fight about who did what, when, where, and why, okay? So please, direct your comments specifically to the motion that's on the floor, which is to amend the zoning bylaws, or the Brookfield Cannabis zoning bylaw as it's been presented. Thanks.
Okay. I was just making...
All right. Is there anybody who wants to speak in opposition? How about support? Hearing none? Okay, sorry.
Mine is a question.
Okay.
The warrant article is on a sheet of paper, three sheets, and it was amended tonight. So my question is, is the scope of that amendment still within what was on the warrant article?
Yes.
Okay, and how...
Okay, so why did I...
The second question is then, can someone explain to me the differences between what was in the warrant article and what was tonight?
I'm going to allow this gentleman over here to...
Have we voted to accept the new amended... Chris Gorman?
That is the motion that's actually been made.
To change it, because you said...
Okay, let me explain this carefully so that you understand what we're doing here, and so that everybody understands what we're doing. Yes, I understand that there was a document that was distributed relative to tonight's meeting, okay, that was on the warrant, the citizens' petition specifically, okay? After the hearing last night, they've made some modifying changes, okay? Clarifying changes, as town council has explained to me. The extent of the changes are not significant enough to put them outside of the warrant article as it was presented to the town, okay? So what I'd like to do is I'd like to allow this gentleman over here, who, are you, you're a citizen, voting citizen of the town, are you? All right, can I get a motion to allow him to speak to the town meeting? There's a motion, is there a second to allow him to speak? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, you are allowed to speak. And so let me just explain what you're going to do, he's going to explain some specific changes that were made, and so that everybody can understand what was done. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Blake Mensing, I'm a cannabis attorney and former municipal attorney. So the handout that you have before you tonight tweaked a few things in response to the planning board hearing of last night. We added a new definition of greenhouse, because the planning board pointed out that that wasn't defined, so we narrowed it down. We cleaned up a little bit of a discrepancy relating to the 10 acres, we added a new entry into the use table to indicate, this was also a suggestion of the planning board last night, that a special permit still be required for a greenhouse in the Flood Plain District.
That table is on like the last page.
Correct.
And if you look at the, you know, the far-right column, that's the permit granting authority, and that top cell there, it says PB for greenhouse, greenhouses in the FP. All right, just they added that, okay, just want to be clear. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The other change was just to ensure that each section of the bylaw we're proposing to amend went chronologically, instead of jumping around, which I agree was confusing, and I apologize for not catching that before we submitted it. The other section that we struck, there was a limitation in the current zoning bylaw on sales floor area for retail stores at 2,500 square feet, we just struck that as a proposal. And then the other item we changed was something that was an attempt to change a general bylaw, which because it has a different quantum of vote, and may not have had legal force and effect with respect to the Board of Selectmen's ability to delegate authority to someone else to negotiate a host community agreement, we struck that. I know that's inside-baseball talk, but there are really only three, four major changes, the substance is the same, as the moderator said, it does fall within the purview of the warrant article. And, you know, I did just read the report from the planning board, and many of the items that they identified were tweaked, and I believe addressed with this proposed handout here.
Okay. So again, there were more clarifying changes, fairly much in response to the hearing at the planning board, whenever that was held, I understand it was last night, I was not there. Okay, is that pretty clear, counsel?
Yes, there were also some proposed changes that that had originally been put forward in the citizen petition, that the petitioner is no longer requested be changed, so they're actually leaving more portions of the bylaw as it originally was written.
So again, I have made the determination upon advice from counsel that the document that you're looking at, the one that you received this evening, is within the scope, and it is reasonable for us to consider this evening. So is there any further discussion on the motion? Yeah. Hang on one moment.
Jeff Clark, 101 Brunel Avenue. Just a point, so I'm not confused here, where it says, "Striking section 8G11A, which currently states a special permit granted in this section is non-transferable, any change in the majority of controlling persons as defined in," there's a title there, "shall constitute a transfer and require a new special permit." Could I ask why, could I ask why this is important to be deleted for the citizen petitioners?
Thank you for the question. So state law already requires a change-of-control application process before the Cannabis Control Commission for any change in ownership at 10% equity or more of a licensed entity. The way this was written, it's trying to borrow the standard and definition from 935 CMR, basically the CCC regulations, but it ignores that quantum of equity. So this says, if you go from 1% to 2%, you have to come and talk to someone about it, when the state doesn't require that. So it's just to line it up with what state law requires. And then I just would make a note, and I haven't looked at a host community agreement in town, my guess is KP law would include a clause that says, "If your ownership changes, you have to come back to the Board of Selectmen to introduce the proposed new owner." Absolutely.
You're up, last time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Two minutes.
I got a couple of questions here on clarification of how you're going to, are we going to vote each one of these zoning bylaw changes, or you're going to vote it as one block?
One block.
Yeah?
Yes.
Can I get a legal opinion, I'm not, I just...
Mr. Moderator, for you, there's a motion on four to amend this bylaw, and I guess it is...
Hang on. There's nothing wrong with the motion, counsel says.
Okay, all right, thank you. You're welcome.
All right. Move the question, please. There is a motion to move the question, that is, there is a motion to close debate. This is, it takes a two-thirds vote to do this, so is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Ah, there's a second, I almost forgot to do that. So this takes a two-thirds vote, so all those in favor of closing debate, now I want to be clear, all we're doing here is closing debate, this is not, and then we're going to, if this is successful, we're going to vote on the underlying motion, which is to amend the zoning bylaws, blah, 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 okay? So all we're doing is taking a vote on whether we want to close debate on this. All those in favor of closing debate, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, debate is now closed. The motion is now, or the main motion is now before us for a vote, and that is to amend the bylaws, the Brookfield Cannabis zoning bylaw, as it has been presented here this evening. This is going to require a two-thirds vote, and so, and so we're going to actually just go ahead and count this thing, only if you're going to raise a point of order, because debate is closed.
I'd like to make a motion to vote by secret ballot.
There is a motion to vote by secret ballot, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
There is a second on the motion, okay? So everybody understand what's going on here. We want a secret ballot, town clerk should have appropriate supplies for us to take a ballot questions, I just need to make sure we got the supplies to make sure that we can do this, right? And so, and so a yes vote on this motion means that we will take a secret ballot vote, okay? And a no says, no, we're just going to do this by counting, okay? Everybody clear? All right, so all those in favor of a secret ballot, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it, we are not going to have a secret ballot. Okay, so now we are back to the main question, okay, which is again, to amend the town Brookfield Cannabis zoning bylaw, and we are going to count. So all those in favor, in favor of amending the Brookfield Cannabis zoning bylaw, please stand to be counted, and remain standing until the counters tell you you can sit, I guess, I don't know. We've got one counter going up here, and another one is over there, just so everybody knows. We've got one counter going up here and another one is over there, just so everybody knows. All right, you all may be seated. All those who are opposed to amending the Brookfield zoning bylaws, please rise and You're gonna explain that tonight, okay? You're gonna expl, oh, it's over here, there it is. It's a very important point that you need to teach, is that your son down there? The noes are 51 and the ayes are 34, the motion is defeated. So all those in favor of adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, everyone.